Good evening and welcome to this evening's city council meeting for March 16th, 2020. And I will call us to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Miller.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Dara.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Tiber.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It carries. Madam Clerk, are there any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Our special order of business tonight, first item is number two, a hearing on proposed resolution adopting and levying the final scheduled assessments for the 2019 sidewalk assessment project, Zone Two. This is a little different. So since we...do we have a motion for this part?
No, there's no motion to receive and file because the respondents were contacted directly.
Okay. So that being the case, we'll move directly into staff comments if there's anything from Public Works Director Chase Regge.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess for the new council members' benefit, I'll give you a brief kind of history of the sidewalk assessment program and kind of the necessary steps. So each year, the city assesses one zone. The city's divided into 10 zones. The sidewalk is marked for deficiencies as mandated by the federal government. During that time, residents are required to replace the deficient sidewalk within a given timeframe. When that timeframe expires, the city takes it upon themselves to hire a contractor to do the repairs. When the project is finalized out and accepted, those residents have 30 days to pay their bill. When the bill remains unpaid, it comes before you tonight as it's shown. All of the properties shown in yellow on the spreadsheet are outstanding debt that will need to be sent to the county to be filed for their taxes, be filed with the county.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open it up for respondents. If there's anyone who is listed on that document as being highlighted, you're welcome to come forward and give a comment. And seeing none, I will now close that hearing. Item three is a resolution adopting and levying the final scheduled assessments for the 2019 sidewalk assessment project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
A motion and seconded? And this...any discussion? It requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item is a public hearing on our proposal to undertake a public improvement project for the Oak Park sanitary sewer repair project.
Moved to receive and file proof of publication.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications tonight?
I have no written objections on file or communications, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it over again to Chase Regge if there are any staff comments for this project.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give you a brief history of the project and how this has transpired. So in late 2018, we have an aerial sanitary sewer that crosses a significant ravine in the city. That aerial line failed. The structure failed and it kind of fell to the ground. We had an emergency repair that was done that is currently still out there today. Since the end of 2018, we've been working on project plans for that. We kind of have an alternative that would better suit the city in regards to liability and risk and future maintenance costs for that aerial line. We have significant maintenance costs as it relates to that line being exposed to the weather elements as well as frequent cleaning of that line that needs to be done. So the alternative route that we're looking at taking is rerouting the sewer, a more traditional method underground, and being able to gravity drain this. So this project would require the acquisition of eight properties, both temporary and permanent easements. And we are required by Iowa law to hold a hearing on those affected properties.
Okay, thank you, Director Regge. I'll now open it up for public comment. If there's anyone wishing to speak from the public on the Oak Park sanitary sewer repair project? Yes, sir. Please name an address for the record, please, sir.
Jim Snodgrass, 3019, in the Tonka Drive, and the property that we're talking about. I received the 27th of December, a contract is signed for $5,500 for this property, which is part of my land, which also has trees that are impacted. And Chase is correct. It has been repaired with a telephone pole since 2018. You guys have also had estimates on putting that back the same way, even though your aerial on your mains that you have now that this feeds to. I'm here to protest the price.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you need to look it up. Absolute insult. I was asked if you could come to our property to look at an alternative, and you come and offer me $5,500 bucks. Not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment on this item? Okay, I'll consider that. Public hearing closed, and now we'll bring us to item five, which is a resolution approving the public improvement for Oak Park sanitary sewer project and authorizing acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion to approve? I'm seeing no motion.
Motion to approve?
It's been motioned. Motion and seconded. Open it up for council discussion. Council Member Tiber?
This is a question for Chase. Could you just maybe review how cost estimates were arrived at and provide us some confidence in moving forward?
Sure. So I think Attorney Rogers can correct me if I'm wrong, but Iowa code allows for any property acquisition that's under a certain size, and I believe that threshold is 10,000 square feet, that the jurisdiction is able to do a compensation estimate. That's basically where they take comparable land. They have a high and low and a median, and they offer all the properties that same median dollar value. And that's...we've done this on multiple other projects, even DOT projects, and that's kind of what's been done in this project case. Actually, we are taking it another step further now, and we are currently in an appraisal property, appraisal for that property to get a more accurate estimate on that.
Thank you. Any other questions for council? Councilmember Sires?
Mr. Mayor, so what you're saying is, is this isn't the final price of $5,500 that I assume was low?
There's a couple things that could come out of the appraisal. The appraisal could come back lower than the compensation estimate or higher, and then we'll revisit it at that time, depending on what the appraisal comes back at.
Have you talked to other property owners in that area?
All of the property owners are in agreeance with what's been offered to them, and I believe that most of them have signed their agreement.
There's only one that's actual...an actual purchase of the property? The rest are temporary easements?
The majority of them are temporary construction easements. There's one property that Mr. Snodgrass is referring to that is a permanent easement. That is correct.
And so the price is still going to be negotiated, or is the $5,500 just it?
We're going to review it when we receive the appraisal. We're probably three to four weeks out from receiving the appraisal, and at that time, we'll reach out to Mr. Snodgrass and negotiate it further.
Okay.
Just have a question on that, too. Will council have another opportunity to view that price, or once it's approved here, does it basically move into staff's hands?
Generally, that's handled by staff, that property. Soon as we receive the appraisal, that we offer the fair market value of the land.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I was wondering, is there a conflict in the repair, type of repair, with the landowner there? Or is that acceptable the way it's designed as opposed to what it was previously for, what, decades possibly?
The actual temporary repair is holding up actually probably better than the original pipe and elevated off the ground. So it's held up for quite some time already.
But, you know, have we had diagrams and explanation of the comparing previous design to what's designed?
Correct. And the recommended alternative is to reroute the sanitary sewer.
Mr. Mayor? Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify one point. If there's a permanent easement agreement entered into, that would come back to council for council approval.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Honey?
Yeah, it's essentially a question. I want to make sure that if...so if we approve resolution five, it will have to come back to council for the amount settled on, correct? In other words, if we approve resolution five, does it...does staff just get to pick the number, or will we definitely see it and get to see the numbers and how it was arrived at and approve it?
Usually, the consideration isn't stated in the agreement itself, but there'll be a cover memo that explains what process was arrived at, what amount was arrived at that will accompany the easement agreement when it comes back. So council will know what the price is, and it can approve or not approve at that point.
So we're just approving it?
You're approving the project with this resolution, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from council?
Sorry, just one more. So I'm trying to see if we approve the price, are we going to be able to see the...is there a way we can request to see all of the process that it got there?
Sure. Anytime you want to see any of the documents that comprise the process, certainly you're right to do so, sure.
I guess what I get worried about is if we're just voting on the "project," quote-unquote, that we lose the power as a council to help the citizen in the long run if we do vote on this. Does that make sense?
Not quite following that one.
So in other words, why would we choose to approve it and then look at what he's offered later when we could possibly table it and then make sure the city works through the issues and make sure everything's okay?
Chase can correct me if I'm wrong, but council approving this would be the...I don't know if a route is the right word, but the concept for the project, that's what council's approving here.
Correct. Move forward with the alternative route, which would require these easements to be purchased.
All right. So any other discussion? It's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Under new business tonight, we have our consent calendar. The following items will be acted on a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that an item be considered separately. Does anyone have items from council they wish to pull? And anyone from the public? Okay, so that's items six through 11, and I'll read the overviews of those. Six is receive and file the resignation of Carol Lilly as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which I did so sadly. Thank you, Carol, for your service wherever you are today. The seven is approve the following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. So I have two for the Board of Adjustment, and then another two...actually, that's it on that part. Item eight is receive and file committee of the whole minutes of March 2nd. And nine is receive and file Administration Committee minutes of March 10th relative to a hearing to consider the appeal of an employee grievance denial. Item 10 is receive and file departmental monthly reports of January 2020. And as I noted in my sheet for that, I need to turn those in at the beginning of the months, and I apologize for not doing that. I had an oversight. Next time, I'll turn it in for the beginning of April. Item 11 is approve the following applications for beer permits and liquor licenses, and I won't read them out. So those items require a voice vote, so...or yeah, so require a motion. Is there a motion to approve? It has been motioned and seconded? Councilmember Tiber?
Yeah, I do apologize. I did have a question on item nine. It doesn't need to be voted on separately.
Okay. So that was number nine?
Yeah.
Okay. And...yeah, go ahead with your question then.
Well, I don't know that the public is really aware, but you know, council has several duties outside of this meeting, and this would have been, I believe, on Tuesday evening, we attended the grievance hearing. And so I just wanted to get a summary of really what that meant, because these grievances are becoming more and more common. In fact, I had one in years of service prior, and I've had two, I think, in less than a month. So you know, if maybe Attorney Rogers could just give a quick overview of, you know, what was being grieved and why it was considered not...why it wasn't upheld.
Attorney Rogers, are you able to comment on that?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The grievance had to do with the collective bargaining agreement and the scheduling of vacation. And the matter was discussed in open session at a hearing of the Administration Committee, and it was decided that because the scheduling of vacation was not included in the four corners of the collective bargaining agreement, that it became management right on the scheduling of vacation. And so the Administration Committee unanimously found that the grievance appeal would be denied. Next step for the grievance would be to seek arbitration. And this procedure, including the Administration Committee, is all contained in the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. And per Councilmember Tiber's request, that will not be voted on separately. So that brings us back to our original motion. Is there a motion to approve these items?
We have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded?
Yes.
So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. That brings us to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted on by roll call vote and a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. I'll pull item 12. Are there other items that the council wishes to pull?
16.
Item 16, okay. Item 21.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I withdraw that. I think it's covered in 16.
Okay. That's also 16. Is...okay. So I have pulling 12, 16, and that is it. So I'll read the rest of the items separately. And that's 13, resolution approving and authorizing execution of agreement with Envision Architecture for design of the Recreation Center locker room upgrades. 14 is approving authorization...and authorizing submission of the city's public housing agency five-year plan. Item 15 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of funding approval agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development relative to the Community Development Block Grant Program. 17 is resolution approving and accepting contract and bond of Peterson Contractors relative to the 12th Street Reconstruction Project. 18 is resolution receiving bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Benton Sand and Gravel for the Permeable Alley Project. Item 19 is a resolution receiving and filing bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Peterson Contractors for the 2020 street construction project. Item 20 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement relative to the Green Hill Road and South Main Street Reconstruction Project. Item 21 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a contemporary construction easement agreement for a stairway in conjunction with the Downtown Streetscape and Reconstruction Project. And then finally, item 22 is a resolution setting April 6, 2020, as the date of a public hearing on the proposed vacation and dedication of stormwater sewer easement at 312 West First Street. Do we...is there a motion to approve those items minus?
So moved.
Yep, okay. It's been motioned, seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that brings us back to item 12, which is a resolution approving and adopting the recommendations of the mayor's firefighter transition task force relative to a transition plan for the immediate implementation of the public safety officer program, approving and adopting a revised job classification for the position of public safety officer, the form and content of the letter of recommendation, the form and contact of a resignation of employment and release agreement, and authorizing the city administrator to execute any and all such approved documents as necessary. Is there a motion to approve?
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. I will open it up for council discussion or council questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm curious. I hadn't seen the mayor's firefighter transition task force before. I'm curious when you took ownership of this.
I issued out the date of the letter for the creation of the task force. Was there...is there an objection to that?
Well, historically, I guess, is my only concern. You've been opposed to this process, it appears, the whole way along. So if you're taking ownership now, just curious. Just want to make sure the history books show it as it's been.
And how would you like that to be shown?
Well, I think it was council motion that asked for the transition task force, so...
Okay, so any change you'd like desired for it?
I'm open to hearing some more conversation about it, but I'd certainly support an amendment that this is the council's transitional task force.
Okay, we can do that. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Tiber?
This is kind of procedural, but if a firefighter agrees to move over into the PSO role, I just wanted to make sure that they have all the rights and privileges afforded to them as a member of the Teamsters contract, and I believe that's how it works. But I mean, those rights privileges are instant. Is that right?
That's...procedurally, I'd say that makes more...we might be able to address that within a discussion from Attorney Rogers. He has some information about this. I asked him to provide just a briefing on what this would mean. We have a few slides for that as well. So Attorney Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To answer your question directly, Councilmember Tiber, once the person is appointed to the position, they become a member of the bargaining unit. I believe we've got some slides to briefly go over what the task force recommendations are. As you stated, Mr. Mayor, you appointed the firefighter transition task force with Councilmember Dara chairing. We met in a series of meetings in open session. I thought a lot of good discussion, a lot of good input from folks there, including all task force members. A lot of give and take, and the compromises were reached, but I thought the task force worked extremely well together and arrived at consensus. And so at this point, then, we reported back to Mr. Mayor as directed, and now the recommendations are before the council for approval in this resolution. Some of the highlights, they're up on the screen now. Basically, there are four options, and I'll take those one at a time. First is to cross-train as a PSO, and I think there was a lot of discussion about the job classification itself, and to make that transition to PSO as accommodating as it could be and still maintain the standards of the PSO position. And so what was arrived at is an amendment to the job classification itself, which is also part of this resolution council would approve, that would allow someone with firefighter one and two certifications and five years' experience in public safety, that could be police or fire, to substitute for the current job requirement. Minimum qualification is an AA degree or 60 college credits. These certifications and experience would be in an alternative. Still, you could still qualify with the educational requirements themselves. That was number one, and I believe that this change in job classification will allow all current displaced firefighters to apply for that position.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Certainly.
Does that apply moving forward for anybody entering the PSO program, or is it specifically for firefighters in this regard?
The job classification will be changed, and it's contemplated that this is the new job classification for the PSO position going forward.
Okay.
Also, it initially, I think the conversation centered around getting folks into the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy that I think starts in April, maybe April 27th. A lot of discussion about that, and it seemed, for a number of reasons, it might be better to allow folks to enter the academy either in April. I believe there's a fall academy, and then spring 2021 academy. So a full year to enroll in the ILEA. Of course, a condition is you have to finish the academy successfully. Okay, Denny?
So that's option number one, transition to PSO position. And there'll be a screening process, and if the applicant gets through the screening process satisfactorily, then they would be appointed to the PSO position right away. And as Councilmember Tiber asked, they'd be part of the Teamsters Bargain Unit then. And some folks will start training. Some folks would...it would be contemplated they'd enter the April...
Some folks would, it would be contemplated they'd enter the April academy. Option two, then, is apply for another position in the city. Quite frankly, there are a lot of obstacles to this option based upon civil service laws especially. And so, we do know that there is a potential for one of the firefighters because they're already on a certified civil service list for promotion. So, that person would be qualified to be hired from the list. There's no guarantee, but I think that person's the only one on the list currently. As for other positions, unless it's a non-civil service position, that's a little tougher because those folks have to come off from a competitive civil service list that's in existence. So, we're not sure. These folks probably have a lot of different qualifications, and so, I don't know of any off the top of my head that would be qualified for a particular non-civil service position, but that option's out there. Okay, Denny? The third option is severance. Spent a lot of time talking about this one. Initially, I think the idea was administrative leave, I think, first part of May, and the task force ended up with administrative leave, paid administrative leave until June 22. And that will be to allow the entire process to be wrapped up at the end of the fiscal year, June 30, because under federal law, excuse me, these folks have an opportunity of 45 days to consider whether or not to sign a severance agreement. And then, once signed, they have seven more days to rescind that signature and reconsider. So, if you put all that together, that'll get the administrative leave finished out June 22, and then, final payment on June 30. The severance package would include five months of pay and five months, the cost of five months of pay and the cost of five months of health insurance. And this is on top of the paid administrative leave, and then, their COBRA rights would attach upon layoff after the signed separation agreement. And in total, that would be about nine months of pay for the displaced firefighters. Next slide, please. The fourth option, and I guess this is the option, if you don't choose any other options, is simply layoff status. And that would be, it would coincide with the same as the end of the administrative leave through June 22. And so, I guess, if there's a benefit to this one, it would be to retain seniority and recall rights under collective bargaining agreement. And, but no severance is the downside of this one. And so, that'd just be a straight layoff at that point. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rogers. And just for clarification, too, can either you or Mr. Gaines, probably you, Mr. Rogers, give an indication of what it looks like if this resolution isn't approved tonight?
Well, I think it's, immediate implementation means immediate implementation, so that's a layoff. That's no severance, no other options, because I'm not sure any would qualify on the educational requirements for their current PSO job classification. So, this is sort of a package. The task force tried to integrate all potential options, and I mean, it'd be my interpretation that the only thing left would be a layoff and no severance.
Thank you. So, any other questions from council? Just council.
Yeah, I'm confused when you, on that date of the June 22, you said 52 days. Is that from today? Because that would put us like, first week of May.
It's a minimum of 45 days. And so, they would be given a lot more time than 45 days to consider this if we stay with the timeframe. I think we're sending out notice the 23rd of March with the agreement to consider. So, that's a minimum. It's not the maximum. So, they'd actually, in effect, be given a lot longer to consider that option under this proposal.
And what were some of the reasons that it was extended that extra month?
I think it was council member Harding could probably speak to this, but there's a lot of good discussion. And I think it was more to give these folks sufficient time to really consider their options. Plus, it's my understanding that while on paid administrative leave, this is not a guarantee or legal opinion, that's a caveat, but I think that time on paid administrative leave actually helps on the pension side, too.
And councillor Harding, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I thought the task force was overall positive experience, and we fell at the June 22 date for many reasons, but mostly what attorney Rogers said, it does add to their accrued pension. It helps a lot of them out. It also helps some of them have time to grieve literally for this decision. And it also helps, it helped us eliminate another option of a retirement option to get, while firefighters are on administrative leave, if they hit their birthday. So, there were multiple reasons why we ended up with that. Rather than coming up with multiple packages to offer separate firefighters, which we then felt would be actually unfair, or possibly construed as unfair, because we had one guy who could stay on administrative leave this long, another guy who could stay on this long, we decided just to make one option, take it to this date, which again, corresponded with June 30, which is the end of the fiscal year. So, we didn't drag it out past that.
I'd like to add a couple comments as well.
Just councillor.
First off, I really want to compliment councillor Harding on his advocacy for some of these changes. And I think what I like most about these changes is that, in some small way, demonstrates to the public who thinks that this is a cold-hearted group of people doing something for their own well-being. There is, we do have a heart. We do care about the result of this on people's lives. Yet, we're making a decision, we think, that is the long-term best interest of the community. We still want to demonstrate that we recognize these people are going to be struggling for a while. So, either the severance, extending that, and basically, offering five months of pay and insurance if they want to go, but also looking, changing the criteria to become a PSO, I think hopefully will demonstrate, again, the city wants to keep these guys here. And I think there's some great options for them. I hope the council supports this recommendation. And the other thing that I want to say, it's all about the process, but we had three two-hour meetings, and each meeting, there was anywhere from four to eight people, many of you who are here tonight, observing. And the nice thing about, number one, it being a task force, and number two, it not being televised, it allowed us to actually have a face-to-face conversation. I can't say that the changes were a direct result of the input that we got from our observers, but we got some really good questions, and we got some heartfelt comments. And then, we had a dialogue with our fellow residents. And this whole issue, in this last six months, I don't know about the rest of you, but it's broken my heart to see what we've been doing to our city. And I'll take my part of the blame if I didn't think through this PSO model. But what that task force did to me was demonstrate the potential that we have as a city to look for common ground. And I think we found some of that. I really do believe that how well behaved, if you will, how collaborative the observers were with the committee really made it easier for the committee to say, yeah, we can extend this a little bit. It was not quite a kumbaya moment, but it was certainly a lot better than it's felt the last several months. And to me, it's a step in healing this community, and I hope that we can move on from here. But the city staff worked hard. Simon did a great job. So, I hope you're all recognizing that, in my mind, anyway, this is a step in the right direction for the whole city.
Thank you, councillor Dara. And before opening up for public comment, if there's other questions?
Yes, sir. Brief detail item, but, okay. Kudos to councillor Dara and Mr. Harding, councillor Harding. They did an excellent job. It was a tough assignment, and I'm really pleased with the resolution that we have before us. I did have one question on the severance. I don't believe that employees electing this route would be eligible for recall, but maybe rehire. I wanted to make sure that, you know, there is a double-dip opportunity where somebody takes a severance package and then, you know, rehire, gets rehired through normal practice. I mean, that wouldn't be fair to the taxpayers to pay what is actually a pretty attractive severance package, and then, you know, the rehire possibility.
Staff, have any comment on that?
If they picked the severance option, Mr. Tiber's correct, they would not be able to be recalled under their layoff status in the collective bargaining agreement. Now, in saying all that, I think I just want to clarify, you know, if somewhere down the road, someone applies for a job at the city, the severance package doesn't necessarily hinder them from getting that position. You know, I just want to make that clear, that they could, just like anybody could apply for a position down the road.
That release does not include a promise never to apply for another position with the city again, nor would we ever want to do that.
Yes. Then my concern remains that, you know, somebody could apply for severance, and then, you know, if there's a council whim to go back to the old traditional model that people could be rehired with that attractive package as well. So, just a concern. It doesn't change my opinion of the overall agreement and what we arrived at, but it's one element of unfairness.
Mr. Mayor, just for the clarification there, I think the difference really would be is, is if one of these gentlemen wanted to reapply for a position, they would have to go through the competitive civil service process, as opposed to if they applied for the, if they just went on layoff, they would have the recall rights under the collective bargaining agreement.
Sure. Thank you. All right, any other questions? Yes, councillor Miller?
Mr. Mayor, and I guess this is to staff more so. Do we have a social media policy that firefighters have signed?
The city has a social media policy that all employees sign off having received and agree to abide by. That's correct.
In essence, that you're not going to badmouth your employer?
No, it doesn't say that.
But what does it imply, if you would?
Basically, as I understand it, it clarifies when folks are speaking for the city or as an individual, because there's an important distinction, First Amendment-wise about that, but also collective bargaining-wise. Folks have rights to organize, have right, they have First Amendment rights to make comments on matters of public concern. I think some of the other policies go to confidentiality of matters in the city, for instance, public safety, not reporting on incidents outside the chain of command, things like that. But I think the policy even says that, that the social media policy is in no way intended to infringe on anyone's First Amendment rights or their right to organize.
Well, I guess, most of you are aware, some personal comments were put out there on social media regarding me by our fire union, 1366 here most recently. And I guess, what I struggle with is seeing how hard you guys worked at this, and I absolutely appreciate the work you did to find a compromise amongst staff, amongst you two both especially. But all the while, we're looking at a $350,000 compensation package to try and make this right, and someone took it upon themselves to put personal information out there to try and publicly shame me into changing my vote on this. So, I guess I'm a little leery of what's going to come for the rest of you folks, or maybe I'm the only target here. But I'm a little leery that this is going to continue out on a social media page by this union, these are city employees, as to trying to get some of you to change your vote, too. So, the public shaming side of this, I think, is absolutely unfortunate, that this is where we're at now, that anybody who agrees with the PSO model, or if any citizen comes out, then they're publicly shamed. So, I think that also lends itself to how many people aren't coming out in favor of this program. So, just wanted to make a point.
Any other questions before we move to a public comment? Saying none. I will open it up for a public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, you may do so. And, yeah. Okay, so name and address for the record, and we see where this.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street, Cedar Falls. The only question I got, based on the committee, is with the coronavirus, if that impacts ILEA academy dates, how would that affect the firefighters?
Okay, yes. Mr. Rogers?
We don't have that information yet, but somebody will certainly get back to you folks on that.
I did have a comment with Chief Boswick about potential for online academy training. So, there's discussion already at ILEA for what they might do for coronavirus. Is that correct, Mr. Chief Boswick?
Well, we've been in contact with ILEA today. Obviously, the coronavirus is an ongoing crisis that we're facing throughout the nation, and we don't have all the information in yet. Right now, what we're hearing is that Hawkeye is looking for another location because all of their buildings have closed down for their law enforcement academy. And ILEA, at this moment in time, the last we heard at 10 o'clock this morning, which has probably changed since 10 o'clock this morning, we heard that they were doing an awful lot of their hands-on type of training in preparation for a time where they may close the campus and go to an online version of the ILEA academy. So, that's what we know right now, and it's probably changed.
Thank you, Chief Boswick. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment? Yes, Ms. Hansel? Name and address for the record, please.
Jenny Hansel, Angie Drive.
Please pull the microphone down just a little bit.
I don't want to touch it. Okay. Jenny Hansel, Angie Drive. I wondered, you didn't say specifically if the ILEA would be paid for, for the firefighters. And then, I just wondered, since the social media policy was brought up, is that for all the council members as well? Thank you.
Thank you. So, the one question about the cost for ILEA, I think Mr. Rogers can answer that one.
My understanding is the city picks up that cost just for every other, just like every other candidate at the academy.
Okay, and then we'll allow that other question about social media policy, if that does apply both ways. Is there anything for elected officials that's required?
Not specifically, although we encourage council members to abide by all policies of the city as they might apply to an elected official.
Okay, thank you. Other speakers for public comment? Ms. Smith? Name and address for the record, please.
Apparently, I'm taller. Whitney Smith, I live on Neola Street in Cedar Falls. One thing that's not covered is what are the conditions that the firemen have in signing the severance package? What are they agreeing to? Why can't they just be assigned to the firehouse with a new title of PSO? They're going to be assigned there anyway. And I'd like to address one other thing. We're not asking anyone to change their vote. We're just asking them to resign. Thanks.
So, I'll open that up for Mr. Rogers. The one question about being able to just lateral over into the public safety program, some of the difficulties of that.
Yeah, so, just like any candidate for any position, there's a screening process that, and background checks and things like that, that have to be done for every candidate, including these candidates who may switch over. So, that's, there is never any consideration to just waive that, that there are certain state requirements and background checks and so forth that have to be done in any event.
Okay. And could you speak to the seniority requirements for somebody to be able to be back in the firehouse if they were previously a firefighter, like the fact that that's bargained and they don't just get to go back to the fire station?
Right. So, when they would, assuming they pass through the initial screening, then, once they become a member of the other bargaining unit, then that contract would control those kind of things. And so, that would be something that would be worked out with the Teamsters.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was your question.
And, no, I apologize. There was one additional question. What was that question?
What terms of severance?
Okay, yes, please.
And that was, that's right in the packet. And that, that was, that's right in the packet, the actual release itself, the terms are set forth as an attachment to the plan. So that's the, I think, other than the name and the date, I think that's the actual agreement that they would be signing. But that's also, we're asking the council to approve the form of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker for public comment? Yes, ma'am, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Mary Legore, 2602 Cedar Heights Drive. And I just want to say that if you let the citizens voted about keeping the firefighters, we would still have them. What I don't like is the corrupt members up here, they decide that they're going to do things behind everybody's back and then let us know at the last minute.
Ma'am, I'm going to call you out of order for that comment.
Hey, I see it, it's real.
As an attack on council members. Also, this is only a discussion about the transition task force itself and the provisions of it, not the PSO model or the decisions surrounding that. So you can continue if you have questions or, or comments about the transition task force recommendations, please.
Well, I recommend they get more money for what they've been through.
Thank you. Next comment for public comment? Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. I will take it back to council if there's additional discussion. I understand there's a request to motion, and I, I apologize for that under here, the star where it says Mayor's Firefighter Transition Task Force. I, I don't have the, the charter in front of me, but I don't believe that I'd called it there, the Mayor's Transition Task Force, and I apologize if that was assumed. I understand what you're saying there. This was a council-directed move, not me directing that. I think sometimes there are Mayor's something commissions or Mayor's, but this is not one of those. So, I understand, or do you want to make an amendment then?
Do we have an understanding, or do I need to make an amendment, I guess, in the attorney's eyes?
Yeah, do we need to have an amendment to strike Mayor's from the resolution?
Well, the mayor did appoint the members, and, and so I, I felt like the mayor was implementing council directive by appointing the task force members and scheduling the meetings and actually also giving specifics to the charge of the task force. So I fully understand this is council's decision and directive, but I don't think it's necessary to amend it.
I see.
Can I comment too?
Mr. Dara?
Not so much on the title of it, but after, when we completed this, you and I had a conversation about how effective that model is, and I would suggest that we consider, I'm not making a motion necessarily, but as we move forward with this transition, that we maintain some sort of task force to do problem solving. If something unexpected comes along, can there be a mechanism that we have this kind of dialogue? The more we talk to each other face to face in a quiet setting, the better stuff we end up with. So, that might be a consideration down the road.
Okay, we could look at that as a referral later on as well. Okay, so no amendment to this then. Is there any other discussion from council before a vote? Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next item that we have is item 16, resolution approving revised central business district overlay zoning district site plan for development on Lot 3 of the River Place 3rd Edition. And I'll open it up for council, is there questions?
Most to prove.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, motioned, it's been motioned and seconded, so I'll open it for council questions. Councilmember Dara?
I had, thank you, Mayor. I had one wish, I guess it would be, and that is the, the section, the, the feature of the drinking fountain was eliminated from the 2016 plan, and I thought of incorporating a drinking fountain along with a pet drinking fountain, dog fountain, because if we're along a trail, along the levees, many, many people have pets that they jog with, and it would facilitate them hanging around longer and allow a nicer experience to enjoy the plaza with their animals and potentially stay down at the plaza longer and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. And, and that reminds me too, on that, as far as I, what should go in or what changes there are, I should turn it over to Director Sheets, who has some information for us about what this site plan, what the changes are, and then we can discuss that.
Sure, I can just give a highlight of the staff report that's in the council packet. We're revisiting this as a result of the 2016 site plan that was approved, a number of changes that are being proposed here, and so we thought that that was important to come back for a discussion and review what's being changed. There's a lot of background information in the staff report, just because there's been a lot of time that has passed, so I thought that that might be helpful to the city council in, in knowing some of that background, but I'm not going to cover much of that today. Just wanted to note that much of that is in the staff report. And there is a full analysis in the staff report of all of the changes and the recommendation from staff, but just to highlight the changes, the lighting, there are changes in the amount and the type of lighting had previously been proposed as matching the streetscape lighting, and now proposing that, well, we'll retain some of that, that we'll do some bollard lighting, and that was a result of a photometric study that showed that it was going to be pretty bright. If you've been down State Street or Washington with the new lights, it is pretty bright, so we thought that that warranted some revision. Benches, the developers proposing to change some of the benches to a, a combination of table bench so that could encourage picnicking and, and more of the social aspect of the plaza, so we felt that that was a good change to bring forward. Bike racks, they would be changing the bike rack to match the U shape that we're doing with the streetscape project, since we understand that the, the pie shape cannot be found at this time. The surface of the plaza proposing to change a majority of that to a synthetic turf grass versus pavers that were going to originally match our, what I'll call our old style, the parcade. They are integrating the new style of streetscape brick pattern and the types of bricks, as this image shows, around the perimeter of the plaza, as well as what this image shows is the sidewalk area, the public right of way starts at the edge of the stairs there, and that is something yet to be negotiated with the developer about the, the payment of the upgrade of brick there, just like we did with the MU2 building last fall. So those are some of the proposes, proposed changes. The bathrooms would be a later phase of the project to still meet the requirements of the development agreement that we have in place. Those would be completed, not in kind of this first phase, but by the deadline of July 2021. And I think that that kind of comprises it. The drinking fountains have been mentioned, that is in the staff report, as being a change that staff didn't initially see any problem with, but maybe there's a, a way to talk about that.
Okay, so I'll turn that back over to, to council, and we do have that as an item of, of the human and water, or human and pet drinking fountain to discuss after?
Basically, I thought discussing with the developer here, he's nodding his head to kind of in favor of it, incorporate that with the water supply from the bathrooms would be quite easy to do in proximity to the trail and, and all the things I mentioned, so.
Okay, so should we list that for like potential amendment to the plan, or would you want to?
Do I make a motion to amend? Is that what I should do?
Well, Attorney Rogers, is that something specific enough that we would need to have an amendment entertained?
The problem is, I don't know the, the, if we can get into the detail of what that would look like, and so I'm not sure if maybe a general consensus that that would be looked at, but I would, I would prefer that there be more detail on that particular aspect if we're going to amend the site plan that's up for approval, but maybe Stephanie has some thoughts on that.
Yeah, what we could do is, you know, in our staff recommendation, we have subject to five conditions, and so if the council wants to have some discussion with the developer about whether there should be a sixth condition about how to incorporate a drinking fountain, then that's something that we can work out with the developer and get those details done.
Okay, so would, would that still mean an amendment to include that sixth item then?
Yes, add another condition, and, and it can be as general as just stated, that a condition is, is intentionally left somewhat open to work out the details later, so that would be, I think that satisfactory to resolve the question.
Okay. Now, continue on with council questions or discussion, I think, Councilmember Miller?
If I may, there was an email that came across late in the day-to-day regarding the stage, and I apologize if you've mentioned this already, Stephanie, but the question was in regard to public art sitting as close to the stage as it is, and there were some comments in here about the stage being temporary versus permanent. Can you comment on that a little bit?
Sure, yep. I tried to cover that in the staff report, but just a brief overview of that, yes, as the developer met with the public art committee recently, they were starting to talk about a couple more details related to it and explaining the location of the stage. There was concern about how long the stage might be in place and whether then the visibility of a, um, public art would be diminished because of that, and staff actually had concerns about the, the length of a, a stage being out there as to, when, when it's out for six months out of the year, is that really temporary or not? So the developer has pulled back their intentions on the use of the stage and has indicated that they would put it up for significant events for a week at a time versus having it out for six months out of the year. And then also will continue to talk with the public art committee about what would be the art piece and continue to, to work that out.
Did something change with that being covered from the original plan? Or is it always, was it uncovered originally, I guess? That was kind of the intent of one of the questions.
The, the site plan that we reviewed in 2016 did not include any kind of stage component to the plaza, nor does it right now, but the developer's intending to put out some kind of smaller stage shade structure. Of course, Mark Kitchell could speak to this probably better than I, on a temporary basis for events, just for some shade for performers, I think, and maybe some protection from the elements with equipment.
Sure.
Okay. And I'll, I'll do that. So for Mr. Kitchell, if you would, do you have some comments coming forward before public comment? We can do that.
Thanks for the questions, and for those who haven't been here since 2012, when we kind of started working on this, it's been obviously an evolving plan that we've been working on. I think this is, I think, the 15th or 16th time I've been in front of this group with these sort of approvals. We're at that sort of final point where we're really pulling things together, and for example, the levy project, we didn't really know about, the streetscape project, we didn't really know about. I was really encouraged in 2017, when we put this forward, to just include the elements that we were sure that we were going to put in there, because no one ever seems to have a problem when you add things to a site plan. They just get, usually have a problem when you take them out of it. So, this is one of those elements that really kind of falls in that category of things that would be set up and taken down. We may rent those items, we may purchase those items, it may be that a professional sound and light company may come in and actually have their own portable elements that are going into there. As we discussed that with the public art committee, they really came back and said, well, wait a minute, we really want to make sure that this works with our art, and of course, we do as well. So, we said, we're just going to keep this as one of those final items that we're working out. We have another year or so to really complete all of the elements of the, of the plaza, so.
Thank you.
And drinking fountain for the dogs. We have some number of hundred dogs downtown, so it's not a problem. We would have put it in anyway, we don't object to the addition, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion from, or questions from council? Is Councilmember Tyber?
Yeah, it's more of a comment, but since 2012, Mark said it, Eagleview Partners and River Place Properties has been developing this property, it's been dynamic, but it's just a terrific demonstration of, I guess, what can be done when you have a, a vision that's shared both by city and, and the private development. You know, we've now added, you know, millions of dollars of extra taxable value, has great retail components, residential components, commercial components. We have our startup community residing in this space, and now this plaza, it's all kind of coming together in a culmination of a, a public-private space. I mean, it's not purely a public place, it's, it's also privately managed, and I, I'm just super thrilled with what's happened in the last eight years, and I guess, hands off, or hats off, round of applause for Mark and his entire team, it's very impressive.
Thank you. Any other questions for, yes, Council Cruz?
Just formally, do we need to amend this to include a public slash pet water fountain of some sort?
Yes, I would suggest that we add a condition number six to include a drinking fountain with the project.
Pet, public pet drinking fountain.
Okay.
Public pet.
Got to have it down at the ankles for the low, low people.
Okay. So, yeah, that gets us back into amendment land.
We could just simply say include a pet slash human drinking fountain with the project.
Okay, so, do I then take a motion for that amendment? Sure, it's okay, so.
Before we do that, sorry. Can I say one thing?
I think so, yes.
Cool. You stole my thunder, but I was going to ask about the drinking thing, but before we amend it, I hadn't thought of the pet thing, so that's awesome, I think that's a great idea. With all the germs and everybody kind of worried about things like that now, what about, my thought was, I want a drinking fountain as well, but I also wanted it to be available where people didn't have to put their lips on it, so a lot of the modern drinking fountains in the schools, you can just put your bottle under it, and it senses it, and it shoots water into your bottle for families.
That could be a three-function.
A three-function, a, a pet, a drinking fountain, RO water. No, I'm just, but I just didn't want to amend it, and again, and I, I know we're going kind of deep with the drinking fountains, sorry, Mark, but I do think that a, a drinking fountain in some capacity is good, I just wanted to make sure I got in there about the possibility of a hands-free drinking fountain, because I don't like germs.
Okay.
Well, filling up water bottles and saving, uh, plastic.
Yeah, and not throwing it away. Is there a motion on the table?
All right, so there's now a motion for a, including a public pet, human, and bottle drinking fountain.
Second.
Is there, is there a motion for that?
There's a second over.
A motion and seconded? Open it up for discussion? Okay, so, yes, sir. All out.
For the record, I'm very pro this idea, but it is Iowa, and it does freeze outside, so I think I'm just a little bit cautious about putting too many specifics around the drinking fountain. If that would be all right, I guarantee you, I'll use my best efforts to make sure that everyone is safely served and everything is safely served, so. I appreciate just a little flexibility on the practicality.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe Mark 100%. If he says he's going to put one in, I'd be good with that. He's a man of his word.
So, it's been motioned and seconded, and, Mr. Rogers, this just gets us back to the original motion with amendments, correct, once they approve this?
Yeah, the amendment hasn't been approved yet, and then once, assuming that's approved, then we go back to the original site plan as amended.
Okay, and that's a voice vote for this part?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and Councilmember Tyber?
Okay, so I'm kind of being sympathetic here to Mark, and while I want every amenity on this drinking fountain possible, but what, could we maybe rescind the motion and restate it that, you know, will accommodate some water feature for, you know, you know, that's practical and, you know, developer will make reasonable and best efforts to, you know, include what he thinks is proper and.
We can get into a splash pad, I mean, what's practical? Can we spend some more Mark's money here?
Crushed ice would be nice.
Could have a shower, could we put a shower in that?
Order, please. So, there's a-
I'm just asking you to simplify the motion just a little bit, to offer a little flexibility and, yeah.
I think we have to either approve or disapprove the motion as is, correct?
You're free to amend the amendment. You, you can entertain a motion to amend an amendment at this point if, if you wish. Otherwise, the mover, movant would need to withdraw the motion to amend.
Okay. Yeah, it's-
I'll make a-
So, the, the original motion was include a, a public pet, human, bottle fountain. Councilmember Tyber?
I'll make a motion to rescind all that language and replace it with, developer shall include with reasonable and best efforts, a water fountain for living creatures. Okay?
Okay, so how are we wording that? Include a-
Reasonable.
Reasonable?
Best effort.
Water fountain?
For living.
Period.
Yep. For the living. Reasonable water fountain. Okay, so that's been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. That brings us back to where, Mr. Rogers?
Back to the original as amended.
The original as amended. Okay, so before going into that, because it was discussed by council, I'll open it up for any public comment. Yes, Ms. Smith? Nope. Sorry, Mr. Kimball.
I'm Ty Kimball at 2204 Valley Park in Cedar Falls. I'm here on behalf of the Cedar Falls Community Main Street Program and our past director, Carol Lilly, our acting director, Kim Baer, and on behalf of the executive board of which I am a member, I'm here to show our support to both Eagleview Partners and the City of Cedar Falls. We want to thank the City Council for their support of the changes to the River Plaza project. We do not see any issues with the project's changes, and we look forward to being able to promote the plaza as a special event venue in our downtown district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Whitney Smith, Neola Street, Cedar Falls. First of all, you guys, look at how happy everybody is. We're talking about water, not people's safety. It's kind of crazy. I'd like to acknowledge that there are businesses that surround this area, and if, I'm not saying people don't get thirsty or pets don't get thirsty, but are we taking away from business and people going into those businesses if we're putting lots of amenities out there? Are we taking away from the business that could be done in those businesses? I'm sure many businesses would love to have people come in to get some water, maybe a donut, a pizza, tea, whatever else is down there, beer. Pets need drinks, too. Totally think that that's a cool idea. I do have two dogs. I just want to say that we need to make sure we're business in mind and people are utilizing the businesses around this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment on this? And seeing none, that brings us back to the motion as amended. It was a resolution approving revised Central Business District overlay site plan for development on Lot 3 of River Place as amended. So that's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And that concludes our resolution calendar, which brings us into bills and payroll. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, and this requires, or is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So I'll open it up if there are any council referrals tonight. Okay, that will lead us into city council updates. Anyone have any updates for tonight? Yes, Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments to make, partially in regards to what I was talking about earlier. There were several things put out on social media regarding my personal life, and I accept that. I'm in this role. That stuff gets, it's public record. Nonetheless, I do disagree 100% that it came from a city employee, but nonetheless, just to address that, I've had several things going on in my personal life over the past couple of years. Some of those you guys are aware of, and some of you are not. I've been trying to sell my house for two years. The information about my back taxes was intended to be paid off when I sold my house. It took much longer than I thought, but it was paid off prior to anything being put on there, out there on social media, I believe, two days before whatever was put out on social media. So I'm not evading my taxes. I'm not doing anything illegal. My, I needed to sell my house, and I think some other people can probably relate to that situation. In terms of work, there was a Iowa Workforce Development lien put out there on social media, and it was accurate. We had a tragic accident at work in August of 2018, most of which I don't think a lot of people are aware of, but tragic accident that completely changed the course of my business. So as any business owner would, I've made adjustments, and I've set the course to try and be a profitable business, but it had a huge impact on my business. So most recently, I've laid off a couple employees, because I'm well aware that that is something that you need to do with a business. So I'm taking the steps to correct that. No, I will not resign from this position, and I'm in office till 2022. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Cruz?
It's more maybe a question for Ms. Rodabek on the super-low interest rates that we have now in the environment. I know we talked a little bit about the potential of refinancing city debt. Just, just an update maybe, or a comment where we're at possibly with doing that and saving some money for the city.
Sure. So actually, the spring here, we were gonna get ready to sell bonds anyway, as a lot of people know, about every other year we sell bonds. So as part of that, we actually had a planning meeting with our bond advisors the other day and talked about what refinancing opportunities there may be. On our '09 bonds, I think those are ones that we're gonna be able to just pay off. There's only a few principal payments left, so it's probably gonna be to our advantage to use some cash and pay those off and save the interest cost on those. In terms of being able to refinance some of our '16 or ' '18 bonds, unfortunately, they don't have call dates until '22 or '24, which, you know, purposely, people put that in there, and that's why they give us good rates, is because they know they won't be called for so many years. So again, probably come here in April, you'll see us come with proceeds to start bond sales, and part of it will be looking at refinancing or calling our '09 bonds.
Thank you, Dr. Rodabek. Any other updates? Okay, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Gaines. He'll have a few staff updates for us.
Mayor, I think I'd like to start off with a COVID-19, or also known as coronavirus, update. So in just what some of the steps that the city has been taking and will continue to take, as I think Chief Boswick mentioned earlier, it seems to be an evolving situation out there, daily, hourly sometimes. So, and we've really got to sort through what some of the fact and fiction is out there as well. So, you know, we're moving forward with these to protect city staff. We're moving forward with this to help protect citizens that we work with and, and the exposure of that particular virus. The goal of any of our efforts is really to provide the essential services and resources to the city and to the community as we move forward. So some of the, just real quickly, some of the essential duties that we've recognized at this time is public safety, police and fire, obviously, public works, and particular refuse, wastewater, some of those tasks that need to be done. And then also, as those employees are essential and will keep working, we also identified the finance operations as, as also some of the essential duties. Some of the steps that we've actually taken is, here just recently, we've decided to close city buildings. That would be City Hall, Cedar Falls Public Library, the Community Center, the Hearst Center for the Arts, Cedar Falls Rec and Fitness Center, and Cedar Falls Visitors and Tourism. With those closures, and that'll take effect tomorrow, and so that would, all of the activities that go along with that. One of the things that we're actually looking at, at doing as well, is all the employees will come to work, but they will come to work without that interaction with the public. The, the Public Safety Department will be open, but it will have limited access to, to citizens as well. This is really kind of a suggestion that we have moving forward. If the council's amenable to this, but the CDC has really started advising that we limit gatherings, whether they're social or public gatherings, and we would suggest that all boards and commissions be suspended until that April 10th date. Let me back up just a minute. We really picked the April 10th date out of some of the governor's recommendations with regard to schools and the closing of schools for the next four weeks. And then one of the things that we might want to address is, in the coming weeks, as this may get more serious to the public, is how the city council conducts their city council meetings. I think we need to keep on the same schedule with at least the first and the third, if not more, meetings to, to address some of the crisis as it may, may or may not come up. I would also suggest that some of those be remote. Public in-person viewing of those be limited, very limited, if not prohibited at that time. On a staffing part, City Hall staff will be staffed, all of the other businesses will be staffed. One of the things that our Human Resources Department is, is looking at doing is reaching out to all of our employees right now and identifying the at-risk members. And the at-risk is identified, is outlined by the CDC, and what, what those members will be. Really, what we want to do is identify those folks and see if they would like some accommodations for their work schedule right now. We're also trying to work with individual employees that we know there's going to be hardships or things that they have to do, whether it's daycare or taking care of a family member that's at risk, and so trying to work through those accommodations as well. So that's kind of a brief overview. A couple other things that, that we had, had made aware of is, you know, we, like other organizations, have limited city travel now, so we're not having any city-sponsored travel anywhere in the, in the U.S., even locally. I don't think that's a good idea. And then unfortunately, in mid-April, we have the awards banquet that will come up, our Business and Industry Awards Banquet, and I think just with the location of that, we're gonna have to postpone that banquet. It's at the Diamond Event Center, which is located in Western Home, and I think we're gonna have to postpone that, so. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, I'll open it up for council for questions. Councilmember Dara? Or, excuse me, Cruz?
So you're saying, Mr. Gaines, that the council meeting scheduled for April 6th will be postponed till the 13th potentially, or?
No, I would strongly recommend that we have the April 6th council meeting. I think the question really gets to be, is will you allow the public in at that time? You know, I've, I've heard different things today, from 250 down to 50 people, down to 10 people in a gathering space. So, and if, if we go that route to where it is just the elected officials and staff, what I would strongly suggest is it's only critical business that needs to happen. So for instance, we wouldn't want to take up a rezoning or a plat or something where you have a lot of public participation. It would just be critical functions to, to keep the government moving.
Councilmember Tyber?
There's some work with the Planning and Zoning Commission that is quite essential for development in our city. And by, by no means am I suggesting that we put anyone in danger, but you can set projects back months, and, you know, that's, that's actually a concern of mine. So rather than just canceling everything, you know, perhaps if we have a more accommodating view, how do we actually have these meetings, do the business of the city, and while keeping everyone safe? So I just get concerned if we don't have things moving through our normal processes, we can really stymie development and, and just overall advancement of our city.
Other questions? All right, so that ties into, we were, Mr. Gaines was talking about meetings, and that was a question for today's meeting as well. There is guidance from the, the federal level that says, recommends no public, or no social gatherings over 10 people. And so just looking internally and talking with the Public Health Director, I asked if there were concerns about meetings like this. She said no. She's at a Waterloo City Council meeting tonight as well, but it is going forwards. The concern moving ahead that we do want to limit exposure and limit, limit spread. So that's why those buildings are being closed for the next couple of weeks. That kind of leads into the, the questions about the election, because we got some information about that today. So would anyone like to comment on that? Are you gonna have me do that? Oh, it's on me? Okay. So as far as the information I have from, from Grant Veeder at the Auditor's Office, is that because of the, the fact there's concerns about both polling locations being open, and then potentially some of the, the poll workers, as you can imagine, many of them are in either an older group or a vulnerable group. So we were approached about changing the date of the election from the 25th, which would be next, or 24th, so, yeah, next Tuesday, to having it the Tuesday after, which would be March 31st. And by shifting it back one week, that allows the Auditor's Office to send out absentee ballots to every registered voter in Cedar Falls, and those will be postage-paid. So this, we were saying earlier, this could be the biggest election turnout in history, which will make it tough for whoever runs for at-large next time, having to get all the signatures to account for the many, many extra votes. But what that'll do is, is we'll put, you can, you'll be able to turn in your ballot earlier than the 31st, once you receive it. And I don't have the, the date, the deadline for that, but the Auditor's Office will have that information for you, and it'll be on the absentee ballot as well. So I don't think there's any other...
Is that strictly Grant's call?
Actually, it was a conversation with the county auditor today, as well as the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, so it's their decision. It wasn't a city decision to do that, but we certainly had input on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I believe you can vote now at courthouse, anyway, but I don't know if that's closed for nonessential, or how do they determine this to be?
Yeah, I don't have that information either. There might have changed since the meeting started.
Could I, could I add a few things?
Thank you. So anything else for that, for staff updates? Anything else to bring up? Okay, so seeing none, that would move us into executive session after public forum. So I'll just read it. Executive session is to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code Section 21.51J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of government body that have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the government body would have to receive for that property following public forum. Is there a motion to approve that?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is that a roll call? So that requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So that brings us into public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity of up to five minutes to talk on topics germane to city business. And is there someone who wishes to speak tonight? Thank you, Sir Patchby.
Eshan Vaichpay, 3831 Conver Lane, attorney at Ball Kirk &amp; Holm in Waterloo. Speaking of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my comments pertain to that body tonight. I represent a group called Concerned Citizens of College Hill. As you are aware, the College Hill is going through a revisioning process that will touch upon all aspects of development, including ordinances and building standards. It is therefore important to revisit an issue previously discussed regarding how these decisions will be made, specifically whether they will be made for the benefit of the public, for the benefit of private developers, and whether they will be made in an ethical manner, free from conflicts of interest. This is meant as a critique of the city's process for vetting conflicts of interest, and not a criticism of any individual developer or commission member. Ordinance changes, design proposals, and developments on College Hill must undergo review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The recommendations of the commission carry significant weight and may be adopted by the city council without significant further consideration or review. This influence of the commission makes it critically important to guard against conflicts of interest or the appearance of conflicts. Favoritism in their deliberation and decision-making can save or cost certain developers millions of dollars, which may be perceived as corruption in the process. Such a perception undermines the public trust. Certain conflicts can be very subtle and difficult to assess. However, the perceived and actual conflicts of interest of one particular Planning and Zoning Commission member are anything but subtle and demand attention. His refusal to acknowledge these obvious conflicts and recuse himself from certain votes is blatant. In the case of a recent multimillion-dollar development on College Hill, this member refused to recuse himself from multiple votes relating to the development and that which clearly favored the developer. The conflict in question that the commission member is a business partner a business partner with the developer in two multimillion-dollar real estate development and home construction companies. This relationship was not disclosed, revealed, or admitted by the member, but was only discovered through extensive review of publicly available real estate documents. The defense for his lack of recusal, that he is not a partner in the specific project, a fact the public cannot verify and therefore cannot trust. This is because the only check for conflicts within the city government is a self-reporting system whereby commissioners are asked whether or not they believe they would encounter any possible conflicts in their role. This commissioner's member, this commission member's answer, a simple quote, "No," close quote. This despite the previously mentioned business relationship. By this disingenuous answer and no follow-up from city staff, despite this member's known activity in the local real estate market, how could he truly have been vetted by the past mayor who pointed at him? How can his conflicts be judged when he refuses to disclose his deep business ties? This member has been a leading advocate for denser and denser development with less and less parking, to the benefit of the bottom line of developers. By this attitude, we've made downtown a problematic place to park by not requiring developers to adequately park their buildings, and this problem now threatens the College Hill. Before Concerned Citizens brought this problem to light, the city nearly allowed an underparked development on College Hill that would have put 100 cars on city streets and in city parking lots, all so the developer could maximize bedrooms and minimize parking costs. This was only narrowly averted after a long battle to expose the absurdity of the proposition. The city has claimed it has little or no power when these blatant conflicts of interest are discovered. The city has punted on the issue. It has delegated its responsibility for keeping an honest government to the very individuals who could personally profit from unethical behavior. This city claims they cannot exclude real estate professionals from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is true. However, these individuals, just like all applicants, must be made to fully disclose their business holdings so that conflicts can be vetted in the light of day. Lastly, the city claims that no justification exists to remove commissioners based on a sole appearance of conflict of interest. This is contrary to legal training provided on February 26, 2020 by an attorney hired by the city. At this commission meeting, which was not attended by the member in question, the presenting attorney stated, quote, "It is the potential for conflict of interest that the law desires to abide, so even if it, you know, doesn't result in an actual conflict, if there is an appearance of a conflict, that can still be something that is prohibited under Iowa law. The city, the mayor, and council members should take the advice of an attorney paid to give them legal training." The conflict of interest from the commission member in question is not potential, subtle, minor, or arising simply from appearances. It is a real, blatant, severe, and actual conflict arising from his role as a managing partner in at least two real estate businesses with one of the area's largest developers, and his joint indebtedness with said developer to the tune of millions of dollars. How can he say he's impartial when this developer seeks concessions from government that save him millions of dollars? How can our elected officials say they stand for open and honest government when they refuse to do anything in response? When the commission member will not exercise good personal judgment, the city must intervene. The member was appointed by a city mayor and should be removed by the current mayor. This city must also immediately implement a robust conflict-check system whereby applicants for any city board, commission, or other position are made to disclose all corporate positions or interests held. This is not currently required. This would fulfill the campaign promises of many recently affected elected officials who pledged to strive for open and honest government. To take no action would be to maintain the status quo perception of cronyism, secret dealings, and inside deals that put private profits above the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Batshpey. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight? Okay, yes, Mr. Slunick? Name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Slunick, 1008 Rock Moon Street. I can understand the concern of the coronavirus, but at the risk of violating open, meeting laws, by not allowing the public here, I would suggest that to avoid that appearance of a conflict of interest, that the meetings be postponed. People are gonna get paid. We're gonna make sure of that. There's no reason to have an open meeting and not allow the public to attend it. I was going to share a little information here from the Iowa Constitution. 66.1A, removal by court. Any appointed, pointive, or elective official, officer except such as be removed by impeachment, holding any public office in the state or in the, in any division of municipality thereof, may be removed from the office by the district court for any of the following reasons. One, for willful or habitual neglect or refusal to perform the duties of the office. Two, for willful misconduct or maladministration in office. Three, for corruption. Four, for extortion. Five, upon conviction of a felony. Six, for intoxication or upon conviction of being intoxicated. And seven, upon conviction of violating the provisions of Chapter 68A, which I have to admit, I have not read yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slunick. Does anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight? Or public forum? Okay, seeing none, I will, oh, goodness. Going into, I'll now move us into executive session. I am not adjourning the meeting, so I will say this now adjourns us into executive session. Thank you.